So we, I know we approved that courthouse security. Putting the keypad on the door going into the district courtroom by the district clerk slash that back everywhere that they go in and out. It's been installed. So I think we'll see a bill for that either today or the next month.
How have you had some little girls up your hand into the high school? Don't let them have it.
How are you?
I was everybody this morning.
Tell who?
I was everybody this morning.
Oh, that's right. I'm stole by them. I got that other. That Lewis one. Oh, come here on their face. She come in there so I think that she said, I said, how much a ticket? I said, five dollars a piece. I said, well, ten of them. And she said, I said, I'm gonna have a check. I'm gonna run to the bank anyway. Just out of kicks and giggles. And I got it all one. And I come back and I had a good stack of them.
See, I like his cover. I went to the bank and I got all ones. You come back from the fruit club. Yeah.
Well, look in there, people got a landing of things out like this.
I bet you the banker was crying. He was like, oh, the usual in ones.
Did you pack her like this?
I sure don't.
I had a bunch of kids, a bunch of teenagers come to my office and they were raising money for the eighth grade dance in their, in their senior prom. And they, I made them do this whole presentation in our, in our meeting room. And then afterwards, I said, okay, I will give you, I will, I will come into top level and ask you if the four of you will sign a contract, wrote out a contract, and the contract states that they will ask and take a date to the eighth grade dance. If they don't take a date to the eighth grade dance, they will return them early. And one of them, one of them was like, I'll do that. And then another one was like, I could do that. And then there was another one was like, uh, yeah, I, I think I could do that. And then the, the little one was just like, I guess, I, I don't know anyone. And then the other three were like, we'll get you a date. So I said, I, I said, I, I heard this, you gotta, you gotta supply me with a picture and a few of your dates and.
They all really come back with the same picture.
It's the same girl.
I should've said, it has to be four different girls. I should've said that. Cause Marcia started her.
I believe she said it was live, yes.
Hey, Timmy?
I saw her walk down. She's short. She's short as two days in a week.
All right, we ready? All right, I'll call this meeting as the Young County Commissioners Court to order. Let the record show, all five members of the court is present. It is nine thirty a.m. We're streaming live on our YouTube channel. If you're watching and you'd like to make a comment, please feel free to call in on nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for our pledge and invocation. Commissioner Rogers, I believe it's your turn.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just ask you to be with us this morning. We just ask you to bless all those that are present. Father, we just ask you to guide and direct us as we deliver meeting today on issues. Give us wisdom. Guide us to make the best decision for our county, for our communities. Father, we just ask you to send rains for our county. So dry, need to heal our lands and fill our tanks and streams. Father, we just ask you to protect us when we go out of harm's way in the heat and we just ask for cooler temperatures also. Father, we just ask you to comfort those lost loved ones, those that are sick and ailing. We just want you to remind them that they're not going through this alone. Father, we just ask you to forgive us where we've failed you, what you're willing to allow. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Stacy. We will move to item number three, which is public comments. I do have one public comment. It is, yesterday was Timmy Hall's birthday, so if y'all wanna wish her a happy birthday, I believe she will be celebrating all day today. Do we have any other public comments announcements? If not, we'll move to the acknowledging the receipt of the hotel occupancy tax report for seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents for July twenty twenty-four from the cabin at Salt Fork Ranch.
A motion?
Huh?
Make the motion you received.
Nope. No, we're just acknowledging. We'll move to item number four, which is consider the county clerk minutes from our previous meeting, which was August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, would you like to make that a second?
I would do a second.
We'll have a second from Commissioner Cresswell. Any questions or comments or concerns with the minutes? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number five, which is consider the treasurer's financial report and update on securities pledge. Treasurer Mala?
No report.
No report? We move to item number six, consider the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers payable. Ms. Roberts?
Which I didn't have on the board.
You always want to spend some money.
Yeah, it's me spending. Today's voucher is total is thirty thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents. And out of the general fund is twenty-six thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars and four cents. There is no dollars.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley and a second from Commissioner Cresswell. Any questions or concerns? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Also have an invoice for some security that we talked about with the district judge of getting the jury room and the courtroom, jury room upstairs has locked in. And part of what the county attorney kept requested this is part of this stuff too. From Texas made the credit security for three thousand, eight sixty-one fifty. I asked him to take it out of courthouse security, which has thirty-four thousand, four thirty-two hundred.
So I went up and, I didn't, I went up and inspected, or inspected, that's a strong word. I went up and looked at the door going into the courtroom and it's, it's keypad to get in. And so they have, they have a keypad to get in and then you have to use a palm to get out. So if somebody, if, for example, the defendant was gonna make a break for it, it would be, you can't just open that door and go. It's, there's a process to it. I didn't, was there, is there one also on the jury room door?
Oh.
I didn't, I didn't look or notice that.
I don't think so.
So it looks like all for.
And then what?
Well, it says jury.
Well, I, um. Access control. It, well, it looks like there's, I mean, there's, there's two keypads, two locks.
It's going to be done on the county attorney's office. It's just not finished.
So this must not be on the jury room. It must be on the courtroom and in the county attorney's office. But, I don't know, it was, it was good. I, I thought it looked really nice. I mean, it, I mean, not, didn't look nice, but it serves the purpose. I guess we need a, a motion to, we, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I know we already talked about this. It's something we were gonna do this year versus putting it in our budget for next year. And we, so do we have a motion to approve this, this invoice? We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell and a second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate it. All right. The main event of this meeting is item number seven. Discuss and consider trying e-Dispatch for a free thirty-day trial and funds to pay if approved. May I present the Honorable J.D. to present this? I want to remind you, you're live on YouTube and there are millions and millions of people watching you.
I am not a public speaker. But I'm coming before, before you, representing Young County Fire. And I also have the sheriff's office, which uses Safe Alert. Jared Cusack, which is the county emergency management coordinator. I only fire is to get the Safe Alert and I only EMS also get the Safe Alert. Safe Alert is a cheap system and that's why we pay. We pay eight hundred dollars a year for it for approximately fifty weeks a year service. But the problem with that, they don't tell us which fifty weeks we're gonna give. They notify two weeks ahead that we're gonna be down for a week. We could publish an article in the paper for nobody to have an emergency during that period. But we don't have that option. And then when it goes down, they say, well, we'll get it back up in a decade. How many calls do we miss in that period of time? With e-Dispatch and also Safe Alert, the e-Dispatch package I put in the office presentation shows you what we get out of it. We get audio plus we get the CAD system, which is a mapping system from the S.O. Tells you where the fire's at. It accurate, it's nine-one-one system use, which is not always one hundred percent accurate. But it's, it's a helpful tool. We can also go in into it and put where hydrants are and they're out in county of the water source, whether it be four milliamp water or two there, hydrant or some sort where you can get water. You can put that in the mapping system rather than driving thirty miles pumping water, which is a helpful tool. Other than that, oh, the sheriff's office is wanting to move this, e-Dispatch and put it in, integrate it with their, with their dispatch in any way. And that way it's automatic, we have a problem, they know it right immediately. If it don't go out, then they rescind it, take care of it or find an alternate. They get on the telephone, call one of us, play, hey, our e-Dispatch didn't go out, we need to go, go do something.
With this map on here too, that fire we had out on finance a couple of weeks ago, they gave me an address of like eleven oh four, whatever. So I went to that, where that, my phone showed that address, but then the fire was about two or three miles down the road and Jared was back off in, in the woods, a couple of miles, and there wasn't any sheriff's department up on the highway. So I'm just riding up and down the road, trying to figure out where to go. Luckily, the landowner finally came out and I asked them where to go.
And that's back to the record, it's our nine-one-one system.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna, but we're not gonna be one hundred percent. But the sheriff's office, shit, e-Dispatch was down for two weeks, so the day or week and a half, I mean, shit, Safe Alert was down. They have integrated and shipped part of it, but they, we don't have every member on it, their CAD system. And it is, I think everybody got CAD, loved it. It is really helpful. And e-Dispatch is automatically sent that out with their system. The drawback to e-Dispatch is we had to buy eight hundred thirty-seven dollars worth of equipment to set it up and they charged a hundred ninety-nine dollar setup fee, which is twelve hundred and eighty-four dollars for first month. Plus the, and then they bill it on a monthly salary and the members we have would be two hundred forty-eight dollars a month, which is twenty-nine hundred seventy-six dollars a year. And we can pay that on a yearly basis. The judge had asked me, I talked to him about it personally, a couple of weeks, and he was asking if the county fire would be willing to pay it for the first year. And my finance committee said, yes, that we need that enough to pay for it. But the only drawback to that is with five inch contribution, it is prior for us to have to pay for this. And that's why I'm coming.
Well, what, what we, I guess what I, what I was talking about was we, we raised our, we're raising our contribution to the volunteer fire departments. So we were saying, take it out of that for this new system.
We're, we're, we're gonna do that.
Cause we were, we're giving, I mean, the way, in the, in the current budget right now, there's a twenty percent.
Yes.
Increase in our funds to the volunteer fire department. So that, that was my suggestion was if we were gonna do this, take it out.
Yes.
Of there. And then, you know, and then the question is, is it gonna solve the problems? Cause like, for example, Safe Alert was sending out, sending out alerts and JD and I were together. I was getting them, JD wasn't getting them.
Well, I got ten, exactly ten minutes, right?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's right. But I mean, it's, it's.
And we've had the same problem.
So it's, but, but, you know, my question is, is that Safe Alert or is that our cell phones? You know, that, cause we all have different cell phones, there's different carriers.
I know.
We have different, you know, some people are updated, some people are not updated. I, I wonder, I wonder, and we won't know till we try, but I'm wondering if this will really be a better system or if it's gonna be more of the same.
I don't know, but.
Cause it is materially more expensive.
Yeah. And I asked him about dependability and he said that the dependability on it is exactly their internet, cause it does rely on internet. Anytime that main line gets cut from AT&amp;T and the sheriff's office does not have internet, which has happened, we won't have this system. But other than that, he says they're running, I don't know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent reliability.
So basically, if I'm, if I'm calculating right, this will cost, I mean, this is rounded numbers, it's gonna cost about four thousand dollars a year to run this system.
No.
Versus eight hundred dollars, the old system.
Like I said, actually buying equipment would be twenty-nine seventy-six a year.
Okay, yeah, first year it's four thousand dollars, after that it would be three thousand dollars.
Buying equipment up front.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I just was doing the first year.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be, you know, it's three times, three times more expensive, but, um.
Unless it's for rural volunteer.
No.
Oh, it's everybody, Omni, I mean, Omni would be.
Yeah, we're great, I hope Safe Alert.
No, what, say again? EMS then was it? Does, I.
Only EMS.
All the EMS uses it, but does, Bobby, y'all don't use Safe Alert yet for, for Graham EMS?
Not right now.
Okay.
We don't have a, that's a system. We follow up with the radios, all three.
Yeah.
It's something we're gonna shift.
So I, I can't say, Judge, because of my position, I receive help, I can use dispatches in the Safe Alert system. I've never not gotten an e-Dispatch tone where there's been multiple times I did not receive a Safe Alert.
Okay.
Well, that's actually, that's a good, that's a good testimony.
Cause Graham Fire uses the, the e-Dispatch. And it's, it's handy because I can get there and I already know where their hydrants are and I can have that marked for the fire department shows up.
Yeah. But the one, the one comment I've always thought, I've always heard that Graham gets it all the time, but they're inside the city limits where they have much better coverage than some of our, our rural.
Even some of ours at the office don't receive all of them all the time for Safe Alert. We have to service them all.
Do you get, you, are you on the Graham e-Dispatch? Do you get those for Graham Fire? No, we don't get them. Well, I, I'm open to trying this and I think.
If they recommend it, I think we should go with the recommendation, that's I believe, what they do.
Well, they're concerned, but the thing I heard was concerned about sharing the cost with all the fire departments. Do, is there fire departments that don't wanna be involved in this?
No.
Well, there shouldn't be a question on that.
Right.
If you're willing to share the cost out of the budget, it's easy to do.
Oh, since, I haven't seen you since I went to Nortechs. I asked about the, the grant that I, that we wrote for a tower in Newcastle to be pointed towards you.
Well.
And to, to connect you to Graham and Omni better. And that grant has been submitted and they continue to hear nothing. So, and it's, and they called on it and they just said, oh, it's still in the queue to, you know, everyone's grants that applied for it, they're just still, they hadn't gotten to it yet. So we're still in a hurry up and wait mode.
One more point, Judge, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the Safe Alert system and the e-Dispatch. On the emergency management side and incident management side of it, it's very beneficial. Because when you go and route, they can mark and route on that app and I'll know every single person I have on that scene and I can make sure every single person gets off that scene as well. So as far as span and control and knowing what resources I have, the e-Dispatch is very beneficial over the Safe Alert.
Okay. Well, I'm open to the idea of, of trying this October one, when we get our new budget year. And then we, first year we funded out of the additional money that we were budgeting for the fire departments. And then let's see how it works and then we can talk about how to, how to maintain it going forward.
Do you want to send you a free?
Oh, I think we do the free month, yeah. So maybe we do the free month in September, cause we won't have to pay anything in September.
Okay.
I just won't have the money till October.
When you talk about the money that we give them to pay, cause we give them that money and they use it how they see it.
But they'll have to write the check.
The hundred and fifty thousand.
They'll have to write the check to.
But we need to give it to them.
I expect for the first of October.
Yeah.
As long as we have the money to give.
What all do you need for that location, for the tower?
The what?
What all do you need for that location, to add the tower?
When we get the grant.
What all do you need for, what all kind of equipment you need?
Uh, we'll have to buy a full system antenna, relay, repeater, radio, and then it'll all go in the Newcastle Fire Department mail, papers, utilities, everything.
Do y'all have a tower?
No, that's what he from fire, we grant.
No, we, we have a, we have grants for the tower.
Well, we can get a tower. They got a tower there.
It's a, it's a guidance tower and we can't, we don't have room for a guidance tower.
Yeah, I think we're looking at something else for that one too. Let's come up for another need for another item, new sheriff's been working on that one.
Say, the one we're on right now, Safe Alert, how do we pay, do we, are we on a yearly contract with that?
Yes.
Or do we do it month to month?
No, it's yearly.
When does that contract up?
I think it's November, but it might be at the end of December. But anyway, that's what I.
I think we need to figure that out so that we can run it in tandem for a little while just to see the difference. And then if we, if we, if we're, if we're happy with e-Dispatch, then I don't wanna pay for another year of Safe Alert if we're gonna be on.
That's what I'm coming to you about. We don't need to both, I mean, we don't need to keep Safe Alert if we didn't back work like it is.
Who is, who is, who's actually renewing the Safe Alert each year?
They go through the nine-one-one office.
Is that Harley? So we need to talk to Harley about possibly, you know, being prepared to cancel that subscription.
Paying that is Nortech's thing, right? Are we paying for that? It's Nortech.
I'll, we'll figure that out. Or do you think that's coming through the courthouse or you think that's gonna be the? Oh, here comes Harley.
Harley.
Harley, we need you now to justify. Can we swear you in? Hey, Safe Alert, who pays for Safe Alert? Is that the county or the?
It comes out of my budget.
It comes out of your budget?
What invoice?
And when do you?
Comes from Exogen, then.
Okay. And when is our contract up?
Now, we just renewed in July.
So it goes July to July. So we're, we're committed for twelve years, uh, twelve months.
Twelve months.
Yes.
Okay, well, good. So we'll be able to run it in tandem for a while to see what we like. And then if we decide we do like e-Dispatch, then we will cancel or not renew Safe Alert. Do they actually, is it automatically renew or do you have to renew it?
I mean, we get a bill every year on it.
Okay.
So I guess we have to renew it. We could probably cancel with somebody, thanks to notice we should have looked at that.
Yeah, we need to probably figure that out, but at least we don't have to worry about it till next summer.
Well, if it's already paid for for over here.
Yeah, cause it's like.
Well, I mean, I think what you do is you run the two in tandem.
Yeah.
So that we can figure out if we're really getting a better service or not. Does that, I'm gonna ask my fire guys, y'all?
So is that not, is that not gonna be convoluted, it's all get out and play around and run?
I mean, you're gonna get some parts of the techs.
Yeah, well, yeah, and then.
Well, don't you wanna do that for a while to see if one's better than the other?
We already had.
I mean, how do we?
It was Safe Alert, we know what it does.
Well, I do wanna.
Have you used it before here?
Oh, yeah.
Where'd you use it? Where, where do you use it?
He's talking about Safe Alert.
Safe Alert.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You've obviously used Safe Alert, but, but, I mean, I, what I'm concerned is whether or not e-Dispatch, we're gonna have some of the same problems rural, because I know like, I mean, obviously the city of Graham's having a lot of success with e-Dispatch, but they have much better cell coverage. I mean, I, I'm wondering, because some of us are having different experiences with Safe Alert. And I'm wondering if it has to do with our phones and our, you know, carriers and all that. I'm wondering if we're gonna have some of the same problems going to the different system. And so.
I think it's not only just the fact that we keep having sporadic, but when you completely go down and we have no option whatsoever, that's a problem.
And will this system ever go down?
I was mindful is that I didn't get a notice that they were down.
Yeah.
And so somebody called me and said, hey, we haven't got it in a week.
That compounds the issues that we have faced with just not getting them or getting them two hours late. And I've got cell coverage, so it's not that, or I've got internet all the time. So I should be receiving those, I mean, on the spot. And so when you've got, in fact, because we don't have a, you know, not everybody has a radio. So if, if they're dependent on us trying to get to the fire station safely while texting our guys, hey, we just had an alert, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Uh, it's creating a safety issue that we shouldn't have to worry about that.
Yeah. I just, I mean, every system goes down. I mean, e-Dispatch will go down. I mean.
Well, that, that is for sure.
Yeah.
But the thing is, is that you want something that's more reliable than what we've been receiving.
Well, that's true, there's a good damn test, yeah. I mean, I'm willing to try it. I just, I, I hope it's the magical bullet that we want it to be. I'm just.
How many people can we have on this total?
With, yeah, charges per person, right?
Right.
Is that how it works, JD? They charge per person?
Yeah, we can, on that.
You have on a group of two hundred or a group of, you go up from there.
Is that what you were thinking was two hundred?
Right now, we're only utilizing one eighty-five.
No, I think it's kinda like Safe Alert, you have to be put on it. So, so.
Two hundred would work, yes, cause right now you're only utilizing a hundred eighty-five.
So you buy a plan, like a plan with the number of people?
Yeah.
That's called a chief, that's the chief.
So we're on the chief plan.
Yeah. Chief two is two fifty, so it doesn't.
So we probably, you can't get away with the hundreds. We have, we have way too many people for a hundred. But we'll just have to be, who, and who would put people on? Would it be dispatch?
Yeah.
John?
Yeah.
John, are you here? So you're gonna manage this e-Dispatch system?
Uh, at least here in the camp.
Okay, so I guess people will have to come to you to say, I wanna be on there. And then how are we going to, maybe Rieger would be the one who would approve who goes on and, I mean, just.
The way I do it now is whoever is the chief of that tower.
So you let that person decide?
They have to tell me that they want that person.
Okay.
I don't just add whoever comes into my office and says I want it. That would be crazy.
And then if we got to two hundred, then we'd have to sit there and figure out, okay, you know, we can, some people maybe can be cut off.
I think the only way that we're gonna exceed that is we add Graham EMS. If they will decide later they want to go on, then we could probably go up to a hundred And then that would be another entity.
Yeah.
And we'd probably come back to where we're funding on. But if we're gonna go till next year before court funds it anyway, that would give us time to figure out what to do.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we-
But what I was wondering, if court could go ahead and buy the equipment, rather than the equipment helping out, go count it. Fine.
Guess the way I'm looking at it, we are, because the, the money that we're allocating for volunteer fire departments. So I'm, I'm looking at it as, as we are paying for it.
Okay.
Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we, um, that we subscribe to E-Dispatch for one year, starting, um, starting with our new fiscal year, with the money coming out of the increased funds that we're budgeting for rural, for volunteer fire departments. And that we try it, we give it a, we try it for one year. You have a second? You have a second from Commissioner Wiley, or any other discussion on the, on the matter?
So do you start now with one month?
I think you- I think, I think we could, we could start it as early as September.
Yeah.
Because that, if you're not having to pay for anything in September, I'll, I'll leave that to, I'll leave that to, to y'all, but yeah.
Is that free trial, cause that, you- Y'all probably don't have-
So, if you get the free trials, you still gonna have to pay for the equipment?
No.
I would think so.
Do you say no, JD?
Do I?
Do you say no on equipment?
Uh, it goes on the first billing cycle. They said we don't have a payment front. They send us equipment under agreement that we, if we don't like it, we send the equipment back. And they don't charge anything. And if we like it, then the equipment will be on the first month bill.
Well, let's try it in September. Is that here with you, Ace?
So it's gonna be hooked up to a separate computer and everybody, which like-
Yeah, but I have to download apps on the phone for it.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, we're gonna try Safe Alert.
E-Dispatch.
I made a motion-
Did you make the second?
No, you said we're gonna try Safe Alert.
Did you make the second?
Wiley did.
The trial, the trial.
And JD, I think you oughta be the, the public face for rural fire department. You did a great job. All right, let's move to item number eight, which is discuss and consider ratifying the executed contract between Young County and the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts regarding the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar Senate Bill twenty-two rural sheriff's office salary assistant grant for fiscal year twenty-five. So, we're, this is the second year for Senate Bill twenty-two. They changed the, they've changed it up a little bit in that last year, I applied for both the sheriff's grant and the county prosecutor's grant. The district attorney did her grant last year. This year, they're gonna make Chris Baron apply for his own, and I can only apply for the sheriff's grant and the constable's grant. We don't really meet the requirements to qualify for the constable grant. So what I put in here is, I applied for and was approved for the Senate Bill twenty-two grant for the sheriff's office for next year. I, um, I, we still have to do the audit before they fund it. We're gonna have to do the audit for fiscal year twenty-four and pass the audit. But I just wanted to put this in here to see if, make sure that, one, we're still good going with Senate Bill twenty-two, and then get y'all to ratify this contract. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley and a second from Commissioner Presswell, is there any question or discussion?
No, Rogers.
I'm sorry. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, a second from Commissioner Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number nine, discuss and consider burn restrictions. Is there any reason to change the burn ban? How long have we been in the burn ban, really?
July eighth.
So what is, July eighth, July, August eighth? So a little over a month, and isn't it good for ninety days?
Ninety days.
Okay, so we have, we still have two months left.
Aaron, do you have anything to input about the Newcastle bonfire?
They've accumulated, they've accumulated a pile of brush for the burn so far.
Is it in the city or out of the city?
They determined it was in the city, so they're gonna get a city ordinance on that.
So if it's in the city, we don't have to, we don't have to do anything.
They will have fire trucks on site.
We'll be on site.
All right, so this is, hasn't really, neither here nor there, but having bonfires when it is a hundred degrees out, when are the high schools gonna come up with something else? Cause everyone's, everyone's homecoming has moved earlier and earlier and earlier. When are we gonna find something different to do than stand around a raging inferno when it's already a hundred degrees?
I see, well, something-
I mean, we need to-
I'm in the air conditioner in the fire truck.
Yeah. Um, at some point, you know, we probably need to find something else to do. Yeah. But, um-
As long as it's in the city, it's not our problem.
Make a snow machine.
That's it. My wife, Wiley's wife says, why don't they just go to the city pool and have a pool party for homecoming?
Probably not bad, I'd wonder.
All right, so no action on the burn ban?
No action.
All right, we'll take a short recess, and we'll come back for a budget workshop. Thanks for coming, guys, appreciate it.
They're pretty close. People been going around the area.
I hear that.
I'm gonna try. Y'all be us.
Twenty-seven, twenty-six, Friday evening. There about five, four. Supper, I'll come and go to bed. All day Saturday.
The batters.
Tell the smell, be, I think exhaust, so try it.
That'd be some prepared.
Yeah. Yes, it's, it's concerning.
I'm gonna try to, this year, fine.
How's BYU gonna look this year?
So it's a wait and see kinda thing, it's, uh, you'd be lucky to make a bowl game, probably.
Uh-huh.
You know, that's kinda what we're gonna measure our success as.
So I watched, I got sucked in the rabbit hole of re-watching this weekend, the BYU Oklahoma State overtime game. And it's a good game. Oh, I know. It was just unfortunate.